Yeah. They want my credit?
If you will be kind enough to call me B. I should be appropriate.
Oh, okay. Well, you're here. Eric's not coming. Hate it that you're not. No, I get one. Yeah. Good evening. At this time, I would like to call the Boyl City Council meeting in order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Roll call shows all councilors present except for Councillor Noonam.
Thank you. Item two is Plaid of Allegiance. Maybe all stand for the Plaid. Item three are special orders of the day and announcements. We have presentation of certificates to landlords who completed the landlord training program. Tom Clifford, and he will be assisted by Councillor Person DeForest.
Good evening. I'm happy to have a lot of the landlords that participated in this training. Councillor DeForest had a lot to bring this together, and we worked together to bring this training to the city along with the Beloit Property Managers Association and the Janesville Property Managers Association. The people that completed went through two classes on Saturdays from January to May. These were four-hour classes, very intense, a lot of good information. I was able to sit down on a couple of them. I know Councillor DeForest said in probably more than I did. But with that said, I'd like to introduce Dick Adams, who is representative of the Beloit Properties Managers Association.
I'm speaking for the BPMA, which is Beloit Property Managers Association. We are a local group of landlords, part of the Wisconsin Apartment Association, along with many other communities, including Janesville. One of our main purposes is the education and training of landlords, both locally and in the state. I think you'll agree that there are many landlords that need some training and education, and that's what this particular course was set up to do. There's 10 classes. I mean, just so you know, extending what Tom just says. I mean, one was on the law of the landlord, which is really the Wisconsin statutes, 704, which is the legal stuff. There's what they call the Ag Rules 134, which are really administrative code, which you might as well consider as law. We all have to follow it. Lead paint, the issues of lead paint, how you deal with that. Fair housing, credit reports, record-keeping, screening techniques, which is a big item that more landlords need to know about. And then the screening workshop, and then the process of evictions, and also bondings and garnishments. So that's what we did, and with the cooperation of you all, even though some of you are new. But the Beloit, which was the main contributor, as well as the Beloit Group contributed, the Janesville Group contributed, and Wisconsin Apartment Association contributed. So we all kind of joined together to make this happen, and it's a good thing. It's kind of a win for everybody. I was asked to give a little commercial. We had 10 people complete all the classes, which is what will be receiving these certificates tonight. But overall, there were like 67 different people took part in at least some of it. It'd really be good if more did, but those are the statistics this time around. So we have meetings once a month. This was a commercial that you asked for.
Absolutely.
And we invite landlords, and even some of you, some of you have been there, to our meetings, which is the third Tuesday of each month at...
Dominico's.
Dominico's, down the street. Thank you, Sheila. So anyway, with that, the person that actually conducted the courses, that was the main instructor for these courses, and is currently the president of the Wisconsin Apartment Association, is Dale Hicks.
Good evening. I actually represent JARPA, as president of JARPA, which is the Janesville Area Property Association, and also WAA, the Wisconsin Apartment Association. I've been working with Dick a couple of years on this, encouraging this, and you all started working together with it a year ago when you had your summit meeting, and that's where it starts. The city's not going away. Landlords are not going away, and the tenants are not going away. But my philosophy is, we need to learn to work together, and it starts with the line of communication. As we go through this process, and we get landlords trained, it begins to make your job as a city much easier, because as they learn to do the things the right way, and what needs to be done in their communication, it backs off on some of the things that you have to put your thumb down on. And we found that to be true in Janesville. We've done this twice in a row, and have had the same numbers. We've had 55 for the one year, and 63 the next year. In both years, we had 11 landlords that completed it. By the time a landlord completes this process, they put in approximately 40 hours of classroom work. And some of it may not seem much to you, but as Richard had said, the law on the landlord, that's the crux of everything. But then we go on into the things of screening, and record-keeping, and credit reports, and how to do their job right. And the housing industry, this is the largest small business in the state of Wisconsin. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Sheila.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Dale. So we have landlords here with us today to receive their certificates, and I'd just like to emphasize, and I know Dick said that there are lots of landlords who could use the training, but I also want to say, there's lots of fantastic landlords in Beloit who are doing a wonderful job of providing quality, affordable housing for our residents. So certainly, the relationship that I've had with many of them has helped dispel those stereotypes, you know, of the bad landlord. So I appreciate the relationship the city has with the Beloit Property Managers Association. So first, Richard Adams.
Joe.
Mm-hmm.
Tom, do you think?
And then I should point out that there is a certificate here from the state association for completion of the class, and then there's also a certificate from the city as well. Oh, thank you. And a letter from the state. Fantastic. Kristy Blaisky. Okay. Okay. I'll hold it for her. Thank you, Sue. Gary Fields.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Susan Fields.
Thank you.
Leon Foxon, Sr. Joe Hanson.
Thank you.
Andrew Milner is not here. Tom Brogan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Edward Laughlin. James Welpolt.
I'll take Jamesville.
Okay. Did we miss anyone? All right, and then I've been asked to make sure that you meet afterwards outside so they can get a picture. Thank you again. Thank you for conducting the workshops. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Item four is public hearings. Item 4A, please.
A resolution approving an amendment to the 2011 Community Development Block Grant Budget and Action Plan Budget.
Mr. Clifford, please.
This is coming before you. As you're aware, the federal government cut the CDPG budget for 2011, which affected communities across the country, and affected Beloit. And what you have in front of you is a revised budget that shows a cuts in the amount of, believe, 100, over $116,000. These cuts came from community action and the city Beloit Housing Rehabilitation Program.
Thank you. Yeah. At this time, Councillor DeForest would have to excuse herself because, for this item. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing for item 4A. Is there anyone willing to speak on item 4A? If so, please step forward, state your name for the record. Anyone wishing to speak on item 4A this evening? Anyone wishing to speak on item 4A this evening? Third and final call, anyone wishing to speak on item 4A this evening? Seeing none, I would like to close the public hearing at this time, and entertain a motion from councilors. It's motion by Lukey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Haynes. Any councillor comments or discussion?
I do have a question for Mr. Clifford. I'm looking over, and I am seeing for the EO HRC Fair Housing, there's an allocation for $20,000. Do we have activity going on there that they would need that amount? I know in the past, they weren't allocated that amount.
Right. In the past couple of years, we've seen an uptick in fair housing complaints, and we have to pay for an investigator, and there have also been some hearings that have arisen because of this. So it's been a lot more active the last couple of years than it has been. So this is a budget that is needed in that area.
Okay. I would ask also, and maybe I'll direct it to a city manager, that when the hearings are taking place, is there a way that we can kind of get looped into just kind of seeing what we're dealing with? I don't think we need to know the exact outcome, but we can just, yeah, just to kind of update on where we are.
We can make sure that it comes to the council.
Okay. And then the other thing that I have with the various agencies that we allocate money to each year, and I do believe they set up goals and objectives each year. Are we following up on those agencies and make sure that they're accomplishing the goals that they set forth, instead of just routinely allocating the same amount of dollar amount each year?
Yes, they are monitored each year to make sure that they are achieving their goals, that they're spending the money correctly, that they're following the rules of CDPG.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, there is a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor of approval, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Passes. Item 4B, please.
A resolution approving an amendment to the 2011 home budget.
Mr. Clifford.
Again, this is asking to use $60,000 from the home budget to go into rehabilitation of a home that the city acquired through Rock County Tax Forclosure. This is a home funds we receive every year as a consortium with Janesville and Rock County, and we've received quite a bit of repayment in this area. So we do have money available to rehab this home with home dollars and wood, and requesting that we do that. The caveat to this is that we'd have to sell the home to a family that is low to moderate income in Rock County.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing for item 4B. Anyone wishing to speak on item 4B, please step forward this evening. Anyone wishing to speak on item 4B this evening? Third and final call, anyone wishing to speak on item 4B? Seeing none, I would close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Approval of 4B, Mr. President.
Motion by Van de Bogarde. Is there a second? Second by DeForest. Any councillor comments or discussion? Seeing none, there is a motion on the floor, and a second. All those in favor of approval, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes. Item five is citizens' participation. We have reached a point on the agenda where citizens may come forward and speak. We do ask you to state your name and address for the record. We do ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. We do ask you to also refrain from personal attacks on councilors and city staff. And they do have a couple of people that filled out a form, and when I call your name, if you could step forward, please. The first one is Michael Zorrel.
Mr. President, my, what I'd like to speak about is on the agenda. Should I speak about it now, or wait till we get to that point?
Actually, now would be a good time for that.
Okay. Name's Mike Zorrel, 1756 Carlisle Road in Beloit.
Thank you.
First thing I'd like to speak about is North Star. I think it's great that we have some more business and industry coming to Beloit. Brief, I read through some of the restrictions and requirements that the company has to meet in order to get up to $950,000 from the city of Beloit. And one of those requirements was that they have to hire and maintain at least 151 full-time employment positions. But what I did not see in there was something that requires a certain percentage or a ratio of those people actually being city Beloit residents. Because we're going to be spending $950,000 of the city's money, I think it'd be nice to actually see that requirement saying, well, at least a certain percentage should be somebody living in Beloit. I know from experience working at Kerry Ingredients, a lot of my coworkers, they come in, they drive to Beloit, they spend a lot of gas. It's, of course, using all that gas is not good for the environment, and they don't live in Beloit, they don't contribute to the city, they don't pay property taxes here. They drive in, they work, and they leave. And so if we're going to be using our money, $950,000 of it, I think it's fair to say, you know, okay, even if you're not going to hire one person in the city of Beloit, maybe if the company has like a relocation program, somewhere like Kerry has, you could say, maybe adjust that relocation program so that, you know, if you decide to help the environment and help and contribute to the city of Beloit, maybe we'll make it a little bit more beneficial for you to move here instead of Janesville, or across the state line, or somewhere else. And so that's, that was my comment on that. And my second comment is on Gantry Plaza. I saw that Fat Wallet stepped up, and they're going to be contributing $40,000 towards that project, which is great. And I would like to see the remaining $290,000 also filled with private donations as well. And I'll be the first person to throw in a buck. It's a great project, but, you know, our public safety stretched very thin. And don't get me wrong, I know that it's not being paid for out of the general fund, but it's one of these things where it'd be nice to have, but at the same time, you know, we want to make sure that if we call the police, they're going to be there and respond quickly. In fact, I called the police over the weekend, and it took over an hour for them to show up. I'd rather make sure our focus is on needs rather than wants. So that's my comment, and if any of you have any questions?
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Mr. Davis Zakurski.
My name is David Zakurski. I live at 1632 Garfield Avenue in Beloit. I also am the owner of Bagels &amp; More, 324 State Street in downtown Beloit. The Gantry is a project that will help to continue to solidify the downtown and make it a better place to do business. People look at, people first view things with their eyes. I know that firsthand, and I realize that when you have something that is aesthetically pleasing, customers, citizens of Beloit, visitors are more apt to come and enjoy an area if they're first attracted by what they see. This Gantry, in my opinion, is another piece to the stone, if you will, in downtown Beloit that we must do to continue to draw new business to Beloit, new customers to Beloit, and to continue to have Beloit be a thriving community and downtown to be thriving. I think the Brick Road that we recently put in on State Street is a sign of another aspect of the pieces to the puzzle that we're putting in in downtown Beloit. And this Gantry is definitely a very important part of that vision, or whatever, you know, you want to look at it as. But once again, without totally reiterating what I've said, the importance of people, I guess you could call it curb appeal. People have to first see something they like before they stop. We see with our eyes first. That's what attracts us. And if we have something pleasing, people tend to flock there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on the citizens' participation this evening? Seeing none, I would like to close citizens' participation. Item six is the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member's request, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda. Is there any councillor liking they removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda will consist of items 6A through 6C. Is there a motion for approval? Motion by Spritzer. Second by Lukey. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Hearing any opposed? Hearing none, passes. Item seven, ordinances, 7A, please.
A proposed ordinance to repeal and recreate Section 1.13 of the Code of General Ordnances of the City of Beloit pertaining to city electoral ward boundaries, and to repeal and recreate Section 1.14 pertaining to polling places.
Is there any who would like to add to that, Rebecca?
Sure. Actually, if Charles would do me a huge favor, and the board, if you would just set that on the stand next to you, yep. Okay. So every 10 years, the U.S. Census Bureau releases census data, and every jurisdiction must redistrict in order to adjust their ward supervisory and legislative boundaries to accommodate changes and shifts in population. I did serve on the 2011 Rock County Redistricting Ad-Hoc Technical Committee, starting in March, and the committee developed a tentative, a tentative county supervisory district plan, which is included in your packet of information. The jurisdictions in Rock County then have 60 days from the date of approval, which was May 12, 2011, to develop a ward map and have it approved by the governing body. These ward maps are due to the county by July 11, 2011. After the ward maps are approved, the county has another 60 days to solidify the county supervisory district maps before the state redraws Assembly and Senate districts. Staff use the criteria and mapping software provided by the state to create the ward map included in your packet and on the board at the front. There are 24 wards. Some have similar boundary lines, but most of the numbers and boundary lines have changed in this redistricting process. The ordinance describes the wards using census block numbers. These numbers will identify the ward locations to the state and federal governments. The other aspect of redistricting was the review and adjustment of polling place locations. The staff report outlines the current and proposed polling places. New polling places include the Beloit Public Library, the Historical Society, and Todd Elementary School. We have reduced the number of polling places from 10 to nine, which will save about roughly $6,000 in 2012. Staff held two polling place location workshops with election inspectors, and public information regarding the major changes in election law and ward and polling place changes will occur prior to the first election in 2012. And it will actually begin in 2011 after all the rules associated with the laws have been presented, decided upon, and presented to clerks. And because of the timeframe or request that you adopt this ordinance this evening.
Thank you. Is there a motion to get it on the table for discussion? Is there, let me back up here. Is there a motion to suspend the rules? Motion by DeForest, second by Haynes. All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye. Now to the merits, is there a motion for approval, then we can discuss. Motion by Haynes, is there a second? Second by Lukey, council discussion. Councillor DeForest, please.
Thank you. Rebecca, I wanted to thank you for, it looks like you've already considered some of the multifaceted means we'll have to use to try to educate people about their new polling places. I'm excited about the mass postcard mailing that we're planning. And then you mentioned here you publish advertisements in the Beloit Daily News, and you have other local papers, so I'm assuming the State Line News and the Chronicle will also, and the LaBose's?
Yes.
Okay. Wonderful. Also, I see that you anticipate increased staffing needed, and I know we talked about that a little bit in our budget workshops. Do you have any sense from previous history, or from other municipalities who've gone through similar changes, about what that will look like?
What I preliminarily budgeted for has been one to two additional temporary workers for one to two weeks prior to the first two elections.
So you think just two weeks would be enough?
Yes.
Okay. And that's to answer phone calls, I'm guessing?
Right. Right. There, we anticipate a lot of phone calls asking where polling places are and what ward individuals are located in.
And then also related to that, are you anticipating more phone calls from individuals, given the state's passage of the voter ID bill, that we'll be also receiving lots of phone calls because of that?
Yes. We hope that those things could be rolled together, with education starting in 2011 and then going into 2012.
Okay. I know that individuals can check their polling places online through our, we have a link, if I remember correctly, through our city website. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes.
All right. Will that be listed on the postcard as well, for people who need to share that with others?
Yes. And that will be updated through the Government Accountability Board at some point in the future. So, I mean, in 2011, obviously, but I don't have a specific date that that will be available online for people at this point.
Okay. But we'll be doing that.
Right.
Great. Thank you for your diligent efforts to try to cover all our bases. Thank you.
Councillor Van de Bogarde.
Thank you. Ms. Housman, looking at the ward delineations with our packet, what is a census block number? There's tremendous number of them in each ward. What does that mean? What does that signify?
That is a census block. Okay? One block. And that's not necessarily a block, a city block, but it's a, it's the smallest area that they count people in.
So geographic chunk of land?
Yes.
It's given a number?
Yes. And those are the numbers that they're given. And the numbers in the ordinance were pulled directly from mapping software and put directly into this ordinance, so they weren't moved around or changed. So there's really no possibility of inaccuracies for that.
So these are the building blocks, essentially. You could go and you could look up that number. It's about, it's like about a 10-digit or 12-digit number. All right, in that, in that number, there are 10 people, or 20 people, or some number.
Correct. And they're not always square, which accounts for some of the odd shapes.
Correct. And they're not always square, which accounts for some of the odd shapes when you look from block to block. Some are nice square blocks, and others use geographic features, creek or river, and extend in odd ways. So we can't split those, which also accounts for some of the oddly shaped wards.
Well, would there be roughly the same number of individuals in each block?
There's a range, but it's not necessarily the same.
What is that range? If you know?
I don't know the range off the top of my head.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council, Council Spritzer?
One thing I liken, a credit to whoever, everyone who put this together, is that it looks like nobody has to cross the river anymore in order to vote, which wasn't the case before. So I think that's great, especially with the bridge being out. One question, I noticed that the polling place for wards nine, 10, and 11 is actually located in Ward Eight, and I know there's been some of that going on as it exists. I was wondering, just the people who live in sort of the upper part of Ward 11 that used to be part of Ward 12, do you know where they voted previously and, you know, whether that would be a big shift for them or not?
Let's see. Let me look at my map.
It's Ward 12, as it currently is, is mostly what it is now on that map, but it extended across the river and sort of grabbed in the upper part of 11.
Okay. They would have voted at Merrill School.
Okay, so they'll be, they already had to go quite a distance as far, and it'll be closer for them.
Correct.
Thank you.
And there is not a requirement that the polling place be located within one of the wards?
Sure.
We did look into that.
Council Lukey?
I want to thank you for cleaning this up. It's a lot cleaner, if I can use that term. And I think getting rid of Morgan School helped in putting everybody at Central Christian, where there's a lot more room. There's not a school in progress. And so 22, well, 24 will now encompass what was 23 before. But it just is a lot cleaner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council DeForest?
Rebecca, do you have a sense of how far approximately is the far this individual has to go to get to their polling place, since the polling place isn't required to be in their ward?
You mean how far any of the individuals that in the city would have to go to their polling place? I don't, but from looking at the map, I mean, it's probably somebody in Ward 24 who lives in Eagles Ridge going to Central Christian. And I don't have a sense exactly as to how far that would be. And the wards are based on population data, and those have to be between 600 and 2,100 people.
All right, thank you.
I had a few questions as well, but they've already been answered, so anyone else have any other questions on item seven eight?
Hearing none, there is a motion and a second. Is there, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none passes. Item eight, appointments, there are none. Item nine is council activities and upcoming events. Council DeForest?
Oh, thank you. First, I'd like to share how privileged I was to be a part of the Parks and Recreation Open Space Plan Town Hall Meeting. I appreciate the residents that came out to attend that Town Hall Meeting and share their input about what they'd like to see in the Parks and Recreation Open Space Plan. One thing that I was pleased about was there were a couple of residents there who expressed concern that the surveying that we did made sure to include all of our residents. And it sounded like there was going to be some supplemental additional efforts to make sure that that was the case. If for some reason you weren't surveyed, if you do have particular feedback or input that you'd like to provide to this plan, would certainly encourage you to contact one of us. I'm certainly open to that. And let me know if there's specific feedback that you'd like to share as we develop this plan. This plan is critical in determining how we prioritize how we spend money in our parks in the future, so we do want to hear from you about your priorities. I also thoroughly enjoyed the Symphony Orchestra and the fireworks last night. It was a beautiful night. I was pretty sprayed down with bug repellent and didn't get bit, but everyone's telling me I didn't need it, but I'm kind of cautious that way. But I really enjoyed it. What an incredible community event. Thousands of people there. It's a great opportunity to draw together as a community. The way that that promotes cohesiveness is incredible to me. I would like to thank North American Tool for sponsoring the fireworks this year and congratulate them on the celebration of their anniversary of their business. And thank you for being a good community partner to Beloit. I'm sure Beloit's residents are pleased with your donation to support our fireworks event. Thank you.
Council Haynes? Council Vanda Bogart?
Nor do I, Mr. President.
Council Lukey?
Two things I want to reiterate and also go along with what Helsman, DeForest Davis said about last night. I think this reflects on how wonderful our parks have become and what a wonderful job Beloit 2020 has done to enhance our parks. Everybody I've talked to couldn't believe how many people were down last night for the fireworks and how they just would overflow the park space, which used to be an old building, brick building that housed Ace Hardware. But now it's park space, and the whole area's been enhanced by renovation. So I just, I think by improving our parks, by improving our park space, we again, like the Gantry, make Beloit a more appealing place. Secondly, I want to publicly thank the city manager, city attorney, and Mr. Yankee for bringing in the proposal for North Star. I think this is a real feather in our cap, and I know a lot of hard work has gone into this. And I think they and their staffs deserve much acclaim. So thank you.
Council Spritzer?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also had the opportunity to attend the Parks and Recreation Town Hall Meeting. Found that extremely informative and exciting with the array of ideas that were presented. I think, obviously, we won't be able to do everything, and we'll need a lot more looking to decide on what the plan is, but the options that are out there seem endless, and I think it was just a real enlightening and exciting opportunity to hear from that. Also wanted to echo what Council DeForest said about looking forward to hopefully getting additional input from anyone who has thoughts on the subject. And then, as has been said multiple times, the fireworks last night and the symphony were great. I also got to attend the Snappers game the night before that, and the fireworks there were great as well. So I definitely got my share of fireworks for the weekend and had a great time.
Thank you. Just a couple from me. For those of you who may have saw the paper, a couple of days ago, we have a city councillor, maybe he's still in Hollywood, I don't know, but councillor Newnam is an extra in the movie, the Transformers movie, and they had a grand opening somewhere in Wisconsin in the last couple of days. So we don't know if he's back from that yet. But if you go see the movie, look for Eric. He is an extra in the movie, and he said you can, he shows up on screen twice. So Beloit has gone to Hollywood again. So when you see him, just ask for his autograph, and it'll make you really feel special. The other thing that I have is also, a few weeks ago, I had the opportunity of attending an annual event that occurs every, not annual, but every two years. It's called the Back to Beloit Event, Back to Beloit Celebration. And on this special occasion, Jim and Cheryl Caldwell, some of you may know Jim, he's a coach of a football team, kind of, he's from Beloit, they're both from Beloit. They have done an outstanding job with the documentary on the African-Americans' migration to Beloit. I know they have a copy of it at the Historical Society, and I see Wanda here. Did he also say it's going to be at the library? Do you know? I know it's at the Historical-
They came in at Beloit Historical Society last week.
Right, so they're at the Beloit Historical Society. Please, if you want to, see this is very interviewing a lot of people in the city. I know Wanda's on there. A lot of people in the city are on this documentary. It's two hours and 18 minutes, and they said they had to scale it back, because when they finished it up, it was over three hours. But it's a very well documented effort, and I think everyone should go out and take a look at it. And I'm also going to put a plug in here, because part of the proceeds, as he mentioned that night, is going to the Beloit Historical Society and also to the Back to Beloit event itself. So he made it a point to say that he's just being blessed in his life, and none of the proceeds are going to him or his wife. So I think it's a very worthwhile event for people to go out and get this. And there will be an opportunity to order your own copy. And I'm sure you can probably go through the Back to Beloit website and get more information on that. Or, I'm going to put her on the spot here, if you need more information, just contact Wanda, and she will, she could help you out there too as well. So the cost is $20. And as we mentioned, the proceeds go to those two events. In the Back to Beloit, they give out a scholarship to area youth to go to college, so that's an opportunity for you to purchase that as well. So I want to thank them for their efforts as well. And that is all the comments that I have. Item 10 is city manager's presentation. I don't believe there's any this evening. Item 11, reports from boards and city officers, 11-8, please.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a development agreement with North Star Medical Radio Isotopes LLC.
Mr. Yankee?
Good evening. Previously this evening, city council had a workshop, spent a good hour and a half learning about nuclear medicine. Learned a great deal. You had a number of questions. I thought those were some excellent questions that you had for the developer. So want to thank George and his team. They did a great job in making their presentation. But again, this item is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a development agreement with North Star Medical Radio Isotopes LLC. North Star is proposing to develop a production facility in Beloit that utilizes linear accelerators to produce isotopes that are used in medical imaging. This proprietary technology, developed by the company, allows for the first domestic production of MOLI-99, which is an isotope used to support 50,000 diagnostic procedures each day in the United States. North Star's process uses a stable, non-radioactive isotope as a source material. Compared to current processes that use uranium, the North Star process produces significantly less waste byproducts, which can be easily handled and easily disposed of. There is no reactor or highly radioactive material used in the process, and it will be licensed by the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. The project involves the construction of an 82,000-square-foot production facility on an M1-zoned site west of Gateway Boulevard and just north of the Gateway Business Park. The facility will include a 30,000-square-foot combination laboratory and office building, and up to 16 LINAC facilities, each containing four linear accelerators. A key component to the selection of this site was the fact that Align Energy will be constructing a new electrical substation immediately to the north of the proposed site. This will ensure a source of affordable, reliable, and redundant electrical power. The company will be investing $194 million into the project, and they hope to break ground by this time next year and start production of the isotopes by 2013. North Star plans to create 150 jobs by 2016. Job positions are mostly specialized, filled by engineers and scientists. However, other positions will be filled for positions like accounting, customer service, sales, material handling, and shipping, among others. The state of Wisconsin and the city of Beloit partnered to put together an incentive package to ensure that this company would locate in the city of Beloit. The city's offered a TID Number 10 financed pay-as-you-go direct developer incentive, very similar to what we've done with most of our prior projects in the last several years. This incentive will be for 35% of North Star's annual increment paid into the district and will be paid out over the course of 10 years. If the district terminates prior to the 10th payment being paid, up to three payments could be made the last year that the district is open. The city is also offering a TID-financed $50,000 training grant for their new employees. The city will purchase 19.9 acres from Turtle Creek Development and 13 acres from MLG BRC to create the project site. The purchase price for both properties will not exceed $900,000. Once we acquire the property, we will flip it over to North Star, and we will convey it to them for $1. The state's participation is they've agreed to support the project by establishing the project site as an enterprise zone, which would support a Wisconsin income tax credit allocation of up to $14 million. We've had a lot of fun working with this company. George has been great to work with. It's a great project for the community. Staff is recommending approval of the resolution. I'd be happy to entertain any questions. However, if you have any questions of a serious technical nature, I'm going to ask George and his team members to try to address those questions.
Is there a motion for approval?
Motion for approval.
Motion by Lukey, second by Haynes. Council Vanda Bogart?
Mr. Yankee, can you outline to us the circumstances or conditions under which the North Star would receive the state tax credits?
It's based on capital investment and job creation.
And specifically for Wisconsin residents, or what?
They have to be Wisconsin residents to claim the job creation credits.
And how would that work? Or how does that work?
Well, the company on an annual basis, well, it's not the Department of Commerce anymore, but it's state agency that's allocating the credits, will send a report to the company, and they'll indicate the people that they've hired, their names, where their addresses are, so they can verify that they are Wisconsin residents.
And what happens that, after that?
After that, they will calculate their award, and they'll present a letter back to the company indicating what their actual award would be.
So if they hire 100 Wisconsin people, they get 2/3 of the credit and 50 from somewhere else, they don't get credit for those individuals?
Yeah, and it's over the course of three years if they create the jobs.
Thank you.
And I'm going to follow up on that, and then I'll get to the other councillors' questions as it relates to the employees. And I'm going to do this in efforts to answer Mr. Zarell's question, because it did come up in our previous workshops. So as it relates to stipulating the employees from the city of Beloit, Andrew, do you feel comfortable asking that, or should we?
Well, I think the bottom line is this, two things. We have never predicated that a company create jobs for only city residents. First of all, it's very difficult to do. Secondly, I think Larry, you could verify this, that's a breach of federal hiring laws. You can't tell a company that they have to hire people who live in a certain geographic area.
Okay. Thank you. Council DeForest?
Yes, if I could follow up on that. I am encouraged that Mr. Messina did commit to, he did commit personally to us, his desire to encourage that employees would be hired from the Beloit area, and that he would aggressively work with the city and with other sectors to help us attract, recruit, and possibly train local Beloit workers. So I'm encouraged by that. Andrew, could you talk a little bit about the benefits of having an anchor like North Star, the type of company they are for our city?
Well, clearly, this is a high-tech medical company. I don't know if it's going to lead to other companies locating here, but it's always a possibility. When you track that kind of talent, that focuses on that type of industry, sometimes companies like to come in and, well, pilot or pirate those employees. We've seen that happen in the food cluster here in Beloit. We have a very strong food cluster, and part of what they do is they share workforce. This, again, we have 150 jobs. Most of them are highly technical positions. Mr. Messina believes that most of them are going to live close to the plant, because it's a 24/7 operation. So there's a very good likelihood they will live in the area. And then, again, just having good paying jobs. And if they do live in the city of Beloit, that can only improve our demographics.
Thank you.
Council Spritzer?
Thank you. First, I just wanted to say that a lot of the questions that people have are questions that I've asked earlier, and so my question now is really, really quick follow-up, if you're wondering why we're not getting at the big picture. But so one really specific follow-up, in Section 7(c) of the agreement, that's on the direct development payments, what, there's a reference that says if no available tax increment is available during a year in which the DDI is otherwise payable, what sort of circumstance would cause that to exist?
I believe that references to the fact that this process to get this operation up and fully running is going to take a number of years. And this TIP district ends on September of '23. So if they don't meet certain deadlines, they wouldn't be able to get all 10 payments in by that date.
So that just refers to if it gets pushed past the expiration of the TIP?
Correct.
It's slightly different. There's a provision in there that allows for up to a triple payment in the last year in case we run out of time. But these agreements are always predicated on the company being in place, being in business, paying taxes, and contributing to the incremental value of the TIP district and are to be eligible to receive this payment. And I think, councillor, the specific section you're referring to just articulates that fact, that there must be a tax payment made that year and contributed to the incremental value of the TIP district. to the incremental value of the TIP district. I can't give you a good scenario where that wouldn't happen, but if they were to go out of business for some reason, uh, dismantle part of the facility, or for some other reason have their increment, their assessment lowered substantially, or even reduced to zero, and no, uh, property taxes were paid that year, then the city would not owe a payment. And again, all the incentives for this project come out of revenue created by this project. So that's why that's an important component of the development agreement.
If I could ask a follow-up on a specific one, then, uh, it says, uh, for any year during which there is no available tax increment, an additional year will be added to the total number of years for which North Star is eligible for DDI payments.
That's correct.
What, if, if everything's not in place, um, I mean, the, it said that this, this period doesn't begin until they're first assessed, right?
That is correct. Until the assessment comes into place, there's not a good scenario for why they would miss a year after that, and that's very unlikely, but that language was put in there for contingent purposes, just to make it very clear that if for some reason there's no payment into the TIP district that year, then the city would not owe them a direct developer incentive for that year. And if for any reason that were to happen, then another year would be added to the tail end of the timeline, so they would have an opportunity to capture that incentive in the future.
Okay.
Yeah. That's mostly contingent language, just in case.
Anything else? Okay. Counselor Haynes?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, all right, we're talking around, you know, big terms as far as $194 million. That's total expenditure of everything they intend to put in, put into the project, correct?
That's, that's my understanding, yes.
So some of that's the personal property or the actual physical equipment, and some of that's the
Yep.
actual facility itself.
Correct.
Do you have any idea how that breaks down and what that does for, uh, the increment in, in the Gateway?
Very good question. Um, this has probably been the one issue that we've struggled the most about. Um, clearly, this is gonna be manufacturing facility. So the, the city will not actually assess it, the state will assess it. So that's one kind of variable that we don't have a lot of control over. And even though we know, have a pretty good idea of how the state assesses typical manufacturing facilities and office buildings, this is a very unique facility. These LINAC facilities are concrete pods, if you will, that hold these linear accelerators. And our city assessor just was very uncomfortable, even trying to guess at what a number would be. But, but there again, if it's a very large figure or very small figure, they're only getting 35%, whatever that final assessment is.
Could I also, Mr. President, clarify one other thing?
Sure.
Mr. Yonki mentioned earlier about federal law. Uh, my comment was not that there's a federal law that prohibits jurisdictions from imposing a residency requirement. There are other very real operational and personal liberty issues that come into play. Uh, we have for years studied this issue, and we have looked at a number of potential incentives and, and using specific requirements. We've never come up with a good way to impose this kind of a lifestyle, uh, restraint on third-party individuals that are not party to this contract. This contract's between the city and a company to locate here and do business here. The state of Wisconsin does have a requirement, or to qualify for the income tax credits, the employee does have to be a resident of Wisconsin. That is a much larger potential manpower pool. As you heard today in our discussion with the owners, the principals of the business, one of the concerns they had would be to make that kind of a, of a commitment to a city, uh, that covers a relatively small geographic area and has a relatively small, finite population, that they would be required to hire from that limited manpower pool in, in some kind of a broad-based, uh, broad basis, which may be difficult to do in every case, depending on the, the nature and the type of jobs. I also commented that I, I think you could put a company in some jeopardy under federal law, because there are federal, uh, hiring and discrimination statutes that do have some impact on the hiring process. And for example, if you were to have a mandate by contract, that the company could only hire some percentage of its workforce from the geographic limits of the city, uh, and there were someone from a protected class in the town that was equally or possibly even more qualified, and they were rejected for that job solely because the municipal government had, had put this hiring mandate on the company, that would be directly contrary to the state, to the federal discrimination statutes. And so you could put the company, uh, in, in between a rock and a hard place where they've done something to placate a, a municipal mandate, and that's, that's put them in potential violation of a federal discrimination statute. So this is a very, very difficult issue, and not only from a personal liberties perspective, uh, but also, you know, from the practicalities of trying to administer something like this that imposes a mandate on third parties who are not part of the contractual relationship. And that's why the city has stayed away from, uh, more specific, uh, legal contractual mandates. We've worked with all the companies that have come in. We've gotten commitments from the company tonight that they will work with us. Uh, we will work with them to make sure the word gets out throughout the community, through all of our local media, social media, and otherwise, make sure all of our residents are aware when these jobs are gonna be open, so they can all participate, uh, in the, pardon me, in the selection process, and, um, we'll do other things as we've done in the past to try to encourage, uh, people to live here as well.
Thank you. Counselor Lukey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to reiterate to the taxpayers who weren't at the five o'clock workshop, a few things that were put in print by the administrative team from North Star. Uh, they said that they would stay in Beloit. Secondly, they said that, and this was put in print, this was not an answer to a question, this is what they presented to us, they said they would encourage their employees to locate in Beloit. The, uh, they said also that they would become ambassadors to the city, and, uh, lastly, uh, become good citizens to Beloit. I think, uh, also, and, and if I'm stating this correct, let me know if I'm, uh, got the figures mixed up, but approximately half of the 150 workers will have degrees, associate, bachelors, masters, or PhDs. The other half would not need these degrees. But again, uh, the, the best people would be hired and encouraged to live in the Beloit area, and I, I think that's important for people to hear. Thank you.
Counselor DeForest.
Uh, I would just like to assure residents that, um, at least I can personally vouch that I spend a lot of time studying this issue, and, um, we did have very vigorous discussion for an hour and a half, uh, with the owners, um, of this business, and, and raise many concerns that we've heard from you. And I can assure you that I feel comfortable that this is in the best interests of Beloit. Thank you.
Counselor Spritzer.
Just wanted to echo, uh, Counselor Lukey and Counselor DeForest's comments. Uh, you know, I think there's, there's been a pretty rigorous process here, and, uh, and, and I'm very comfortable that this is an extremely positive addition, uh, to the city. Um, just wanted to add that.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I believe there is a motion and a second on the tape, on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, passes. Item 11B, please.
Resolution awarding contract C1124, Gantry and Gantry Plaza.
Mr. Flash.
Thank you. This project will construct a decorative industrial art structure, a raised stage, uh, decorative multicolored lighting accents, a sloped lawn area, landscape planters, decorative benches, and trash, receptacles, et cetera, along with brick inlays in the downtown area at the corner of State and Grand. Um, this was before the council in April. It was bid, came in over budget, was rejected, and we were asked to value engineer the project. We did that. It's been rebid, and this is the results of the rebidding. Three bids were received, a low bid of $287,169.50 from Gilbank Construction, with an allowance for change orders and extra work of $43,030.50 for a total contract of $30,200. The base bid includes the two alternates that were presented in the bid package, which consists of a painting upgrade that'll give us a, a 25 to 30-year life cycle on that paint, and the plaza stage area. Funding comes from the 2010 CIP, and the project is in the TIP 5 district, which will expire in the fall of 2012. A private donation for the plaza stage area has been offered of $40,000, which will be applied to this project. This donation is only if the project is constructed this year. The donation is from the Fat Wallet Charitable Foundation. Attached to your packets is a letter of support from the DBA. As you know, this project was a result of many meetings with the downtown businesses, and as a result of those meetings, this, this is what came forward. It is recommended that the council award the contract, including the alternates of the project, that are the paint upgrade and the plaza stage area, to Gilbank Construction Company.
Thank you. Either a motion for approval?
Motion for approval.
Motion by Lukey, there's a second, second by Haynes. Counselor Vandemogar.
Uh, can you outline, uh, the efforts that you made, Mr. Flash, to re-engineer and get in at the little bit lower level, and then also the painting issue?
All right. Um, for re-engineering, we value engineered it. There were some, some medallions and structural issues that needed to be reviewed. We reviewed those with our design structural engineers. We hired structural engineers to take away questions of the footings and unknowns that were not there as part of the original bid package, and that's where we achieved most of our, our savings, along with some minor lighting issues that we made installation and maintenance better in the second bid. Uh, the painting issue, it's a, instead of going with a two paint, two coat paint process, we're adding a third coat of a, uh, of a special paint-type material. I can't get you into the technical aspects of it, it, it will add the additional life to the, to the painting process. And it's felt that that would, is, even though it's a little bit more expensive, it's worth it for the long-term maintenance aspects of it.
This thing isn't gonna end up being a rusting piece of metal
Yeah, during my lifetime, well.
Well, how long do you plan on living?
He just, he just turned 60 a couple weeks ago, so we
Well, let's hope that you, at the very end of your lifetime will be the, when you start seeing the rust arrive.
Okay. Anything else, Counselor Vandemogar? Counselor DeForest.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I'm caught off-guard with that. Um, would, would it be possible, Kathleen, I hate to put you on the spot, but could you talk about the importance of this project? Because certainly I've heard, and I'm certain that many of my colleagues have heard from the community, their concern about spending this kind of money on something that seems extravagant. Could you talk a little bit for us about the importance of this piece?
Absolutely. Um, it, it's already been alluded to that we went through a pretty extensive public planning process to envision, uh, what the community would like to see downtown. Um, and this is the result. And what's so wonderful about this is that we also, um, Beloit's a winner this year for the Great American Main Street Awards, uh, through the National Trust for Historic Preservation. As I've told you before, uh, this is an award you win once, and for it to coincide with this beautiful structure that's been publicly planned with all of our downtown property owners and businesses and community members, it has gone through all of our, uh, the Downtown Beloit Association's committees and our board, um, very extensive, uh, conversations that, you know, to hash through all of the details. Um, it's also part of the, uh, State Street Reconstruction Project, and we've already seen the fruits of, of, of the first phase in, in the brick being laid, and how that has changed how our farmers market feels, how it has changed how pedestrians move throughout our district, how it has changed how, uh, people drive through our district and slow down. Uh, when you slow down and you, and David beautifully spoke about this, um, what it means for businesses to see with their eyes first and then choose to invest, uh, what it means for visitors to linger longer, to feel welcome. Uh, this is, uh, a culmination of a lot of people envisioning a very special sense of place. And, uh, for it to be dedicated to the Great American Main Street Award, uh, that we've just received is tremendous. Um, also for Fat Wallet through their charitable foundation, um, and it'll go through the State Line Community Foundation to this project. This is a point in history for Fat Wallet as well. Everybody knows for their business, this was a very important year for them, and it made national news. Um, they're being very good stewards of our downtown in donating $40,000 to help with this project. So I, I think it is a culmination of many things, and it's marking history for our community and for our downtown. And it's a wonderful way to celebrate something that, uh, in 23 years, we've just earned as a community for our downtown. So this is a wonderful celebration of that. Did I answer your question?
That was wonderful.
Okay, thank you.
And then, Mike, if you could reiterate exactly where the funding is, is coming from in as layman's terms way as possible, please.
All right. If you refer to your resolution, we have 290,000, 200,000 available from the 2010 CIP, which is funded through the TIP 5 district, which is funds from the businesses in that area. The taxes that they pay goes to the, that district.
If I can follow up, if it's funded directly from the taxes paid by the business in that area?
Correct.
Thank you.
It's the increment to theirs, yeah. Right, this is a direct result of what they've asked for. And there will be another $40,000 from the State Line Community Foundation from Fat Wallet.
Thank you.
Charitable commitment, okay?
Thank you. Counselor Haynes?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think, uh, this is more than the stretch of a comment. I think it ultimately comes down to this, is that it's, uh, our, our downtown is, is improving by leaps and bounds. Uh, I mean, you know, what a great piece for that. Two, the money is gener, being completely generated by the businesses within the, within TIP 5. And three, an organization that represents those businesses and said this is how they want to spend their money. And I, I, I can't see any other way but to, you know, to do it their way and, and to advance the downtown.
Counselor Spritzer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I have a couple of questions. Um, I know that the State Street Reconstruction Project was timed as it was to avoid impacting the farmers' market. Uh, this construction would take place relatively shortly. If we approve this tonight, uh, what, if any, uh, impact on the farmers' market is it gonna have?
Well, of course, there'll be some minor impact. Um, we have, you know, our specifications allowed for, um, requirements to have pedestrian traffic through. Uh, most of the construction work will be Monday through Friday. We're not allowing anything on Saturday or Sunday. And there, it's not of the type that should be like the street. You know, the street just totally decimated the place for the farmers' market. With the street being fully available, we're looking at one small corner area that would be impacted, and we're supposed to allow pedestrian traffic through that, possibly through, you know, like we did when we did the street, we had fenced areas for pedestrians to keep them safe and secure and, and channelized, so.
We'll still be able to park in that fat lot and walk through tomorrow.
Should be.
Um, as, as far as the lifespan goes, uh, you know, I certainly hope that Jim gets to live to see it start rusting, uh, but my, uh
Me too.
Um, at, at the point that that does happen, that the East Coast paint were off and, and this structure starts to age, uh, what kind of maintenance costs are we talking about? And what kind of overall lifespan can we expect if we do, do the maintenance that's required? I mean, can we expect this to last multiple generations beyond just this initial 20, 30?
Indeed, it's a, it's a steel structure. And so the type of coating that we're putting on it will give us 25 to 30, potentially longer years of, of useful life of this initial coating process. Um, they should be able to, in theory, sandblast off what is there and do a new coating, most probably as it stays, or just, uh, if there's isolated locations, there's normally ways to do minor repairs.
And then, uh, a final question on that. Uh, the, uh, one concern besides the, the cost issue that I've heard from a couple of people is just, uh, that it's a fairly small space, uh, in there. You know, it, it is an open space, but it's a fairly small one. Uh, and, and, you know, I've tried to look at the renderings and the diagrams and picture what it would feel like to be there. And I guess, you know, can we speak at all to how with this plaza and the structure and everything, you know, that we're not gonna create something that feels too cluttered or cramped, that it's still gonna be a free-flowing, you know, place that people have room to gather?
That's exactly what you said. That's the vision. That's, you know, seriously.
Yeah.
Um, it's very difficult for most people to visualize from a set of plans and drawings how it will feel. The people had very difficult time visualizing how we were putting the planters and the, and the restrictions on the intersection, and how much additional space that was going to, to, to afford for this project. Now that's done, you can see the space, and the artist renderings, I didn't bring it down, it's up in the manager's conference room, is very close to what that is going to look like. That's, that's the intent. I mean, and it will have a nice, open feeling. It's not gonna feel closed in. It, it has a sense of size, it'll have a sense of place. It has a sense of size, it'll have a sense of place, and it'll be a statement that you've arrived. And that's what, pretty much, all of the downtown business people said they wanted to achieve.
Thank you. Mr. President, if I could just add a brief comment. You know, this is, you know, I recognize, you know, as I look, you know, ahead to the vote we're about to pass, that this is a process that's been underway for some time now, and that, you know, coming onto the council in April, that I've sort of come in, in the middle or somewhere closer to the end of this process. I've put a lot of thought into this, talked to a lot of people, and, you know, frankly, it's, I've gone back and forth, and it's been a very difficult decision. I think, you know, that a lot of the questions, you know, that I've had a chance to ask, you know, not necessarily all here tonight, you know, have helped inform that, and only time will tell whether this is the right decision or not, if this becomes, you know, what we hope it will become. But, you know, tonight, I'm prepared to defer to the input process that's taken place and to the request of the DBA, and, you know, and flip my coin in favor of saying, let's give this a shot, and let's work together to hope that it does become a great gathering place in the downtown.
Anything else?
That's all.
Anyone else? There is a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor of approval, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes. Item 12 is a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion? Motion by DeForest, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Spritzer. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we adjourn. Now, at this time, I would like to call the special meeting of Beloit City Council to order at this time. Notice is hereby given that in accordance with Section 2.02, Pren 3, City Code, a special meeting of the City Council of the City of Beloit, Rock County, Wisconsin is being called. May I have a roll call, please?
Roll call shows all counselors present except for Counselor Nune.
Thank you. At this time, after a minute recess, we will adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, Pren 1, Pren B, for the purpose of a hearing, purpose of hearing a report from the city manager and personnel matters related to the public works investigation. Is there a motion to approve that? Motion by DeForest, is there a second? Second by Lukey. All those in favor of adjourned into closed session after a minute, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We will meet in the conference room. Thanks.
Exactly, you've got everything you need. There's no point for you to set it up.
Okay.
I'll write down. Congratulations. Come on. Thank you.
I just need to sign.
Thank you for your learning.
I need, do I need, you want me to sign?